Yeah. Tree growth is a misstep. They don't have acres and acres of timberland. And so their tree growth doesn't even move the needle in their budget. So they are well below seventy percent now, and we are not factoring. We're waiting to do a reval later, and it doesn't affect them. So why the legislature has set this up? So that the punishment for having your ratio be low is a tree growth. Actually, it's profoundly unfair to the rural communities, but it's been baked into law for years. It just never mattered much because there haven't been many periods where the market moves so quickly. The towns just go on the wrong side of this. You know, we've been doing this for a really long time. If you have the slow erosion of your time of your ratio, and if you have plenty of time to react to it. Yeah, that's not the last four years.
Right.
And hopefully, we'll go back to a time period where the real estate market's a little bit more predictable over time. And this will be just like a window that we'll have to have to cope with to get from A to B. You know, that'll be the goal. Because there's no way the state, if the state was ever going to give leniency out of this, they'd have done it right now. And we wrote, I wrote notes to the people up at MRS. You know, I've known from where in the same industry, we talked to them. They're the ones who come here and do the audit. They don't have any authority to do that. And try and push something like this through the legislature that basically by the time you even got it through, the need for it would have gone. So there's not really relief in that sense of why they, you know, our clients, our, we list the towns we do. We have an awful lot of towns, an awful lot of tree growth, we grow to the small levels. And they're the ones who are getting at the harvest. And they're all choosing different avenues. Some are factoring, some are choosing not to factor. But how hard for us to do it and get to it? So as those tax bills go out, they're going to confuse people a little bit. But if you look at the amount to be paid, in most cases, it's not immediately different.
Good.
And it's a little more, you were going to go up this year end. But it's not like it went up by, you know, we didn't raise people's taxes by one point five, one point five multiplied. And people who were, you know, the people who are in tree growth, this gets even a little more complicated for them. But generally, this factoring benefits them, which is ironic. The reason we're doing it is to save your reimbursement from the state. And the individuals who are property and the tree growth, the ones who benefit the most from our actions. But we don't think that's all kind of baked in.
Yep.
So other than, and she, Leanne has committed papers she's assigned later. That's just a formal acknowledgement of the tax being committed. And you two, the guys are, realize that you are efficiently reassessing the town. Help you, help, I do a lot of the work in, in your, under your authority. But in the end, that's why you're.
Uh, I saw a couple of questions. You had said that you increase the value of people's property. So what's, what's the next step next year and the year after the living floor reval?
Well, so next year, we're probably. I'm hoping that the change I made now is going to keep us in good position for next year. Now, I unfortunately, the way the computer works is I physically have to do it. But having done it once, next round, be as much work to do. Also, people will be used to it. So when we charge you to do this, we charge you for two things. We charge you for the time it takes me to take, which you all are ready to work. And then I have to take that, and then I have to break the database down, segregate out all the things that we are by law allowed to factor. And then do the factoring and put the database back together. And then after we do that, I have a database that I maintain with all the true and original values that we still work on. So like next year, if you build a garage, I don't go and value your garage at this one point five. I value your garage on the same database we already have. And then at the end, I then multiply that by one point five again. But the hope is, we're going to be able to use the one point five again. And if that's the case, then factoring again next year will be easier. But we will have to do it.
So that was my next question. So if you're, if you're factoring by one point five, you're raising the property value, taxable value. When the full reval is done, is it going to be a less of a hit for people?
Yes.
Or could go the other way?
No, no, the closer we get, the closer we bring the value that people's taxes are based on.
At the state ones.
To true value, the less of a move it's going to be when we finally get there.
So, so in twenty eight?
In, in terms of what your value was to the new reval.
Right.
In terms of distribution within the town. So it's not all of your properties have gone up commensurately with the general, the average market change.
That's, that's what I thought. I just, I know.
So it doesn't mitigate that.
I know what Buckfield went through and their, their taxpayers saw that huge increase in the property value. Of course, they didn't understand the, the no rate went down, but the property value went up. But I'm hoping that's the case for us then. By doing this now, there won't be that huge delta in it.
Well, so you're right, the, the values won't move as much because they're already have been sort of pushed up. And the mill rate won't change as much. However, that's just part of what a reval is. Another thing that a reval is, is the sort of, it redistributes the pop. And so what we're doing now is not redistributing the pop, it's a straight multiplier.
When you say that, that's what I was saying, so someone, someone's tax history evaluation could go down in twenty eight.
Yeah.
And others could go up.
Well, because we only brought in about seventy-five percent of the market. I think a better way to say it is, not everybody will go up by the same amount in twenty eight. Right. There won't be a straight percentage multiplier for people. There'll be some people who go up more than others.
Which is physically relevant.
We're going to reset the value structure of the whole town and properties that have, say, you know, any given town. You take a ten year ago or fifteen, whatever time, whatever will be, I guess it'll be eleven year ago. You know, there are people in that eleven years, their house gets pretty rough. And even though the market value goes up for all property, like they may get left behind, right? Because their property is rough. You have other people in that same time period, somebody moves into town, fixes the house up. So now you get two things happening. You get kind of big improvement on the house and the market going at the same time. So anytime we do a reval, it's redistribution, a loose panel. And generally, they're not earth shaking. I mean, they tend to be really, really big the first year we move into a town and do a reval. But then when we've been here for a while, the moves, the, the changes, you know, because we're trying to stay on this, you know, for inventory and treating everybody equally as much as we can. So those jumps become less. But there's always the big developments, like, you know, what happened with big acres relative to homes? You have both. What happened to waterfront relative to non waterfront? You have both. And you don't want to have commercial. So we don't have the example of what happened to industrial relative to residential like all of us. But you do have those other categories. And so by the time we get to doing this in twenty eight, we may find that one of your categories is going to see a general bourbon shift onto their property type. Just based on what's going on in the market.
So we got two more years of, um, it's a lie for breather, I'm guessing?
Well, it's not guessing so much. It's, uh, we're going to keep what we're doing right now for the next two years. And then re, reestablish the values for everybody, not just by changing it with a multiplier, but by rebuilding all the values described.
Perfect. So the multiplier change per year, I guess I didn't understand that.
Well, I'm hoping that what we just did, I'll be able to do the exact same thing next year. That's the plan. That was the goal. I tried to kind of hedge our bet on that, so we keep stability that way. That's why it's seventy-five.
Right.
You know, I didn't try to go to a hundred. Because that would be misleading to the taxpayer that we took another day, we know not to be that accurate. And then we try to make it to be a hundred percent, which people would want to expect that to be accurate. Well, we're still, we're not, we're not doing, we're just getting it out of danger. We're getting it above seventy was the goal. So I think by bringing it up to seventy-five, I'm hopeful and reasonably confident that next year, we'll just build and do the same thing. Year after that, I don't know, just depends on where the market comes. You know, there's some indication things calming down a bit. I don't want to be the one to guess it. I wouldn't still be working every day if I knew where the real estate market was going.
How often is a town in general supposed to be reevaluated?
So that, you know, there's a bunch of ways to look at that. There isn't a number.
No.
So the state would say, well, you fail to beat assessing standards. Assessing standards are seventy percent. The ratio being second, your assessments are seventy percent of fair market value. But then the way they measure that is always looking backwards a little bit. Like, because they only use sales that occurred in the past to determine what you're today. And so that's already a little behind the game. So any given year, you would be seventy percent in the eyes of the state like we were last year. We were able to declare seventy, when really we weren't. Right? And so there's, you know, seventy percent is the required minimum assessment standard. There's also another one, which is the quality rating, which we won't go into, which is a, a quality rating is a number of twenty. And if we ever get together, go over a sales study, I'll show you that a little bit. But, um, so either one of those, if you don't, if you're not below twenty on the quality rating, and you're not above seventy on your ratio, then you're not meeting assessment standards. And the state wants you to reset value. They'll argue the factor. They prefer if you do a reval, it's up to your community. Now, years ago, there is in the constitution, a mention that you're obligated to reset value every ten years. People don't realize that that actually refers to back to when there was a written commitment book. And towns would just take the same book and tax people the same amount, multiple years in a row. Maybe some of you moved into town, write a new one in there, come up with a tax form, and then every year, you get taxed what was in the book. But the state was saying then, you need to redo that book at least every ten years. Well, now we redo everything every year. You know, we add everything up, we, we change values every year, we have a new budget every year, we have new revenues every year, we have new values every year. You know, we don't factor them here, we actually calculate value for every property in town every year. So you meet that, that constitutional obligation each year. So that leaves it up to you to reval when you deem appropriate for your community. And some towns go really, really long time windows. We've had towns go like twenty-three years. I mean, do we advise that? So, but, you know, we, we sort of accept towns where they are. And it also depends on which twenty-three year period you pick.
Right.
Like sometime, when towns usually go a long time, it's usually because they sit at set value at a relatively high point. And then there's a long, flat period in the market. Like, you know, markets are cyclical. People like to point to seven years. But you might have a three or four year, basically flat market before a three year rent. And that's only seven years. It's not the same every year. So if we reset value in twenty twenty-eight, and I personally don't think we can have a year on year repeat of what we just went through. Like, I know a lot of people are buying starter houses now. If that were to continue, I just don't see our communities being able to support that. I'm a little surprised that we are as high as we are now. So I think we are probably coming into something, even if it's not downturn, it might be a stall for a while. And so that, if, let's say we reset in twenty twenty-eight, you can see getting another ten years. Like this, if until this, until this, like seventeen. Like, we didn't, nobody was really thinking about this being a problem until like twenty twenty-three. And then all of a sudden, it was like, whoa.
Yeah.
And then the fact that it didn't sort of like throw some brakes on in twenty twenty-three, and we're rolling up even higher numbers in twenty-four. Now, twenty-five seems to show a little bit of slack in. Um, I would never. And so seventeen turned out to be a tough time to go ten years. But most ten year windows, if you look back, have a good problem at it. What, what did we do before, like oh seven? Can we go away, oh eight? I think that was the goal. I don't, I don't, I think it might have been oh seven, oh eight. So either way, that, that ten year window usually works, but it's only because of the real estate cycle being kind of reliable that way. But we are, we'll make twenty-eight, not to be eleven years. And it, you know, it's a little bit of a bump in the road between, you know, getting there because we're going to have to factor. So, but I think once people get used to this, it won't. It'll be just like it was before. The tax shifts on that.
Hey, good question.
I just wanted to make a comment. When I did that math back there, where all the houses are in town, I actually looked at the tax cards for all the residences in town. And many buildings were assessed at twenty or thirty thousand dollars. I had to actually look at the individual cars to see the buildings, because some of those were residents. So when you go up a set amount to everybody, the people that have, that are the buildings that are assessed at twenty or thirty thousand dollars, they're going to. Proportionally to somebody who lives in the house, you know, assessed at a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, they're getting a higher burden, you know. Proportionally than the, you know.
Well, that's what I was saying.
That's, that's why I'm just saying, when you do a blanket like that, knowing, having looked at all those tax cards, I know that some people will be affected that way. But I mean, then, but I see there's not like an alternative. I don't say there's alternative, just to let you know that.
I'm not, I'm not sure how the math works on that, though. I think those properties might see much bigger changes when we actually go to reset value.
Should go beyond the limit.
Will go in value, they won't fall up as much.
Well, no, they won't. So when everybody goes up at the same percentage, the impact is pretty consistent, you know, straight map. So, you know, a one point five percent multiplier against the hundred is a greater number than it is against fifty, but it's the same percentage.
Right, but, but when they're reassessed.
Oh, yes.
So, so when they're reassessed, that house is not going to go up to sixty thousand and it's assessed at twenty, if it's still maintained with the same kind of.
Well, maybe, and, and here's.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and so maybe, and here's why I say maybe. So sometimes in the real estate market, things aren't, like, when, especially in a rising market. So there's usually a breaking point where houses that could qualify for regular financing kind of trap with whatever the bottom of the market is. In, in Auburn, you're, if you've got a house that would qualify for regular financing, you're going to be three hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little more. Right? But if you have one that won't quite qualify with that, now you're sort of what we call effective house in the real estate industry. And you are going to track whatever the minimum house value is. And so what happens is, if that house that you're looking at now, it's at like twenty-five thousand dollars, is there because it is, is never going to qualify for regular financing? It's in all shape, whatever, then that one, when we reset value, probably won't go as much as the one that's currently at like a hundred thousand. But is perfectly fine, and is going to go up more because they're going to be pulled up more by the, than one in the real estate club. So it, 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 with the low value homes, in a reval, it's a harder judgment. And then the other part of that is, let's say the low value home, let's say you were twenty-five thousand and your land was like forty-five thousand. You know, you're still well below a hundred. But if we get to setting value in twenty twenty-eight, every single sale we see is north of a hundred or four, that there really is nothing available lower. And you might see a big percentage increase. So I try to stay away from those, those hypotheses in what will happen in the reval. Simply because that right there kind of shows you, like, some properties won't be able to be pulled up by the rising tide of the real estate market. And others will be. And they end up being kind of two different groups. And when we get around to doing that, we're going to, I guess, get a look at what the market's telling us at the time. So that's why when we do get there and you say, well, who's going to go up and who's going to go down, I won't be giving you any answers. Because I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will all have to, as we do it. At some point, we send out notices of value in twenty twenty-eight, we'll be telling people their new value. At that time, we'll know, but guessing between now and then, I, I. Two new areas.
Right.
Lenny?
I was wondering, I hope I didn't already answer this before I got here. I can clearly see the homestead exemption on my tax bill, but I don't see anything about the tree growth.
We, we don't put the tree growth on tax. It's on the website. Just look your property, it shows you the break, if you're in tree growth, if you have a breakdown of, like, items, how many acres.
Yes, I know how many acres and so forth, but I don't know how it affects my tax.
Oh, well, it, well, so that's a good question. It's not a discount.
No?
No. And so, you know, it's a good point to make. The homestead is a straight up discount.
Right.
You were this, we minus that.
Right.
It's not the way tree growth. Tree growth basically says, all these acres that are in tree growth, you assesses, don't get to value them, be the state values. The state tells us what they're going to be worth, we adjust that by our ratio, that's what we tax you. What we wouldn't have otherwise taxed you differs property property.
Right.
So it's not a fixed discount, it's a different valuation. So, and if you wanted to hypothesize what you would be if you were out of tree growth, then I would have to sit down and price your property as though we're not interested. And then I would then be able to estimate that number. And if you take it out of tree growth, I have to do that as a way to calculate your penalty.
Yeah.
But, but it's not, it's not like we value it in discount. It's a completely different value for the land that's in tree growth.
Thank you.
Let me answer my.
Dan?
Uh, it's just, it's, it's kind of a curious question, essentially, you know, that are coming up pretty popular with me. I'm wondering, I'll be able to see what's going to, what the outcome might be as far as I can use taxes appropriately. So you tax this, this is going to tax this multiple residential units. So I just don't see what was going to happen and how the state and you are going to look at that.
Okay, I can tell you what we're thinking now as this evolves. So you're right, that's a big change. So historically, if you had a, let's call it an in-law apartment, right? Because that meant you're not supposed to rent. You're supposed to have somebody as part of your household, that's all. That's no longer a thing in the state of Maine. That law changed, changed that. So in the past, if we went for a property that had a finished basement with a little kitchenette, and it was an in-law apartment. We added the value for the extra finished space. We'd probably add a little value for the extra bathroom, depending on the kitchen. If there was a really nice kitchen, we might add value for that too, but mostly they weren't. So we would just add value for the extra finished space. We wouldn't any, add any value for it being a potential rent. If you had an outcome that you could legitimately rent, let's say you had to go out, like you built a little apartment up above. Well, currently, the way we would value that is if that was a separate functioning rental, we would value it as a second. Not a garage. So let's say I have one taxpayer who has a house, a garage, it's a finished space above the garage. But it's not set up for a rent, like it doesn't have a kitchen, you know, it doesn't have a separate entry you get there from going through the main house. No separate elevator. That would be valued as just finished living space above the garage. Now, I'll take a property where that is distinctly separated, and there's a separate entry, there's a separate elevator, and it's used as a rental. We would value that as a, where it was maybe a lower quality, but a separate house. And when we do this in the computer model, we have different values assigned to these different categories. So there's the house valuation, and then there's just extra finished space valuation, and then there's a secondary house valuation. So it's just how would we categorize? Now, the good news is, with the law changed, we no longer have to worry about things like zoning and in-law and not in-law. All we need to determine is, is there a separate entrance? I still believe that even if you had an ADU that you had to walk through your main home to get to, that, that's going to have a diminished impact on value. Most people aren't agreed to have that. So we're looking for separate entrance, separate elevator panel. And if it looks like a rental, and it's a, another structure or a section of the main house, instead of valuing it as additional finished space, we value it as a second. Maybe a little grid, maybe smaller, but it would be as a second hall. So that's our plan for now. Now, if we get to places where, and that is probably what we do in the home, but if we get to places where there's like a, a ponderance of them. People are starting to have like a bunch of them. At some point with our rental property, we move to a gross rent multiplier value model, where we figure out what the average rents are. And then we figure out the worth of that rental stream, and we value that. A good example is, uh, anything over like a two unit. If you're three, four, five unit apartment building, we generally don't value that the same way we would value it like a residential hall. We would value that with a gross rent hall. It would take into account the rent. So, because sometimes you could have one that is relatively small, but you still have five rentals. I could have one that is a little bit bigger, but have four rentals. Which one's worth more? Depends on the rent, but probably the five. And so if you ended up with a bunch of ADUs and they all end up being rental units, we might move away from the model where we value that as just a little mini house. And start using a rental multiplier. I don't think we're going to see that in Hartford, but we definitely have that in other. So that's the plan.
Yes. Trace, don't we? Good?
Good.
You good, Ed?
We're not going, we have more questions.
Okay.
You know, get the phone number for me. Long this call.
All right, we appreciate it.
Oh, happy to do it.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Jeffrey, before we move on to the next item. Um, I want to make a motion to add, hey, guys. Peggy.
Oh, really? I would like that because I'm being a motherfucker, so I'm interested in all these.
If you get Leanne to give you a write email, I think you'd have a spreadsheet.
Well, I just did with me on top of my head.
Peggy, Peggy, Peggy. Trying to talk. Two, two things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is sound working? That's a couple, it's not.
No, it's like, I think it is, I'm going to record it, so I'll upload it. I restarted it like three times, I don't.
Yes, I just had a couple messages.
It'll all be coming through the laptop anyways, right?
Default microphone.
Yes.
So, back to what I was trying to say, I want to make a motion to add the R O C ten withdrawal to the agenda after the tax command on a new business. So, well, tenth item for tonight's agenda.
And there's new business?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Number two.
Second.
I second that motion.
Cool, fair. Okay. Covenant, so the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, Slatman's meeting, and G A Garrett. Second.
Second, Tab.
And baby.
I'm not going to go up here.
Yeah.
We had it all across.
Yeah, we went on a field trip without you around. And it was fun. Well, come this time, yeah.
Yeah. I heard Dwayne Cornet passed away, was that Andy Stad?
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay, Eric, Google warrant eight includes goodwill supper reserve, PMA reserve, paving reserve. And A R P A reserve, expenditures.
I'm not sure, you may reserve, I just left it in there.
I think I saw.
Was it?
I think so, I'm not positive, I, I do remember seeing something.
And the paper wants October twenty-second, twenty-five, and October twenty-ninth, twenty-five.
I'll make more to do.
Second it. Second it?
Yes, sorry. I didn't know you made a work of art.
Pay them, pay them. Reports, I wish you ten director report.
It, I don't know, probably no one answered this, but I read this report today, and I didn't realize. Is Percy still working as a research officer, or is he down?
No, he still is.
So is that after this year, they need one?
I. Something about the sheriff wouldn't school resource doctor, kind of.
Does anyone know who answered that?
I heard a report said they're kind of eight percent.
Well, Percy's still there, I just.
I heard he is, I heard he is still there, but he is not.
Getting paid?
Getting paid.
Perfect.
Until this happens.
Guys. I don't know that.
Yeah.
He helped quite a bit down there.
I got good miles, I'm driving heavy soft, and we see him out of where it was.
What's that?
Any of those lines, just we didn't want.
Oh, yeah. They go, go, sign.
Purchase the checks.
No, we can sign it.
I don't know, it probably says something we didn't sign. It is hot.
It is hot.
Yeah, that's what I had heard, that he, he still don't have, but he's not.
Why isn't that two days?
So the sheriff's office hasn't approved the, it's on.
I put a key blocking.
Sheriff's office.
Yeah, they're right there.
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
I guess I don't know, cause it says the sheriff's office has not filled the safety resource office position in our area. I don't know, cause I, he is there. So I don't, I guess I can, I, I'm just lost in the process. So maybe he's just, I had heard that he'd been hiring at the end of this year, but.
I'm pretty used to retiring at some point.
Yeah, he's been tired twice. And he came back, took that position down, was consumed. I don't know if it's one of the.
So we need to go through the end, put zero.
I don't know, did you get any applications?
No, we didn't.
It's so various.
Do you vote commissioners report? You had a vote complaint from Labrador Farm?
No, I think I said it's fixed and.
What's that?
Wait to dig some, fix it.
Waiting to dig safe?
Yeah. As soon as Dig Safe figure gets over there, he said there's telephone wire to think in the ground there, so.
Yeah.
Uh. I haven't heard, have you heard from Ricky's? Yeah, what? Do you have, you know when this is a road committee meeting? They haven't had one for over a month. Just curious what's going on, cause. They haven't had one since before I, I last, and we approved at the last meeting I was at, that they could purchase that software, the road software, and I don't think they've even talked about it since.
They can call in and ask you.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, if you want to, I'd agree. I got a couple members of road, they asked me if they have them, this meetings, and I said, I don't think so.
Oh, calling and asking. When did you want to double the?
I just wanna know what the status is, I mean, they wanted that software. If you want. Yeah, so, yeah.
And I, and I've sent them emails asking you to tell them what the software was too, and I didn't get an answer. I wanted to know more.
Yeah.
I guess that's it on the roads, uh. He did some work on town front road.
Yeah.
Looked pretty good.
So. This is all our roads, I don't know if everyone knew, but. We got three bills from Spencer Group for the paving. And these numbers are rough numbers, but I know they're close. Pratt Hill came in at one ten or one eleven. The estimate was like one twenty-two to one twenty-three. Davenport came in at seventy. The estimate was at ninety-four. And we got a bill for thirty-five hundred for the, um, drive driveway, it's milk driveway. So we were, about thirty thousand, we were over thirty, under what the estimate sort of sounds good.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Responsible report. Nothing. C E O.
Yeah, they're all alone.
One building permit to plumbing.
Soon as that's a meeting Monday night, what do you do? Did you get your question answered from him, or you mentioned to me? Jared?
Who's wrong?
Jared, the CEO.
Oh, yeah.
You're also.
Well, we didn't get to tell them the tickets, it said, uh, initial plan, we got orders, then, and had a table on that stuff.
Did, so did you talk to, would that subject come up, the? On shores, is it? West Bear?
It did not.
Okay. So, one thing I learned today is Kathy and Nick from the Ad Card Planning Day, was that the CEO needs credits. Credits, that's right term, Peggy? CEO needs credits or training credits?
The CEO, I thought it was the planning board.
No, the C, it was CEO.
This is just CEO, I thought you had a whole training program, it went true.
Well, they need credits, I don't know what, but I don't know what.
I'll see, continued education credits, make sure.
Well, I don't know what, no, code enforcement officer, anyways. The code enforcement officer needs credits and they were talking about shoreline zoning credits and other credits, but I don't know what that total is. So I think Leanne's gonna look into that, she said earlier, so we can find out, was, Gary. This would, this would have been a good training, cause there's a lot of CEOs just planning that, so it'd be a good thing for him to be involved in. If he, if he plans on continuing to do his CEO job.
More training, you find you better. Okay, A C O. Five one, nothing. Triswa.
Twelve hours of approved credit in each six-year cycle, it's been open, who cares? Small, twelve hours shoreline zoning, twelve hours of building standards.
The credits?
That's what it says for state of the game.
Twelve of twelve?
Yeah. And it says, uh, a certification valid for six years. I'm trying to see. Means during each six-year cycle, that means twenty-four hours, looks like. It's not too hard.
Alright, that's you, Leanne.
Okay, so, um. Dan mentioned this to me before, but I forgot about it. A lady called today, she had applied for a cleaning board, pressure land permit. But when she came to a meeting, she discovered that it wasn't needed, and she wants to be refunded, actually it's her son.
So what, what does she put a permit for that she doesn't need a permit for?
Uh, so she was gonna do some landscaping and, uh, it was just, uh, maintenance.
No.
So there's no building, there's no, there's.
So the landscaping is existing? There's existing landscaping, never just gonna squeeze it out?
That's all. We considered it, uh, maintenance repair. Uh, he really didn't need, so, uh, there's nothing that he should.
What are we talking?
Eighty dollars.
Right, no problem. Giving her money back?
I'll make a motion to refund the eighty dollars.
Second that.
On favor?
Kind of, it's not like, hold on. So without the, with the tax bills and other things lately, the copiers creeping along barely. We got a quote for the new one, which money was approved to go into the capital outlay account, three thousand dollars, plus what we have in equipment account, should, will, will cover it. Been wondering. It's fifty-three, yeah, and we already pay the maintenance, paid a credit for that.
We have any counter though?
Yes, we have maintenance.
Yep.
What, have you had any budget for?
There was thirty-five, but I bought that shredder in the expense account in three thousand to put into the capital outlay reserve, just in case we need to.
So you got over six then, roughly?
I think the maintenance out of that too, it'll be close, but. That covers all toner, maintenance.
Does this thing have this, um, this is what we had in work, does this have scanning ability?
Yes.
It does, does the one we have now have that?
Yes.
It does, yeah.
That's, you mean, this, it looks like this one can make, will, will place a staple and all.
That's good. Better than the money, good.
Yeah.
Well, it's good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a new copier. I'll second.
About favor?
Good, this isn't the report, it's probably, it's not actually on the agenda, but it's made, the money's already been approved, it's one of the, you keep you guys in the loop.
No, I went in there last night, Julie said it just died again, she gotta work here, so.
What's the lead time? Did they say here?
I think Ask them for sure that these.
Probably not longer, yeah. Hopefully not, right?
What committee, two minutes?
Well, you got.
Not done yet, I don't think, there was something else. Well, now we'll talk about this later, I'll move it up a little. And then the other tax bills tomorrow morning, they're all in my car, stamps.
Does the post office pick up here, or do you have to take them to the post office?
I, I tried to get some stamps early and ran them up to the mailbox, but I couldn't fit in there, and she don't read them.
Come early today.
I know.
Where'd you go for that?
They don't come at the same time, they.
What's that?
They come when they get around to it.
He's coming early today.
So while we're on, well, I'm gonna keep, I got another question pulling in. So I was looking at the budget from the past three, you printed off one the other day. Can we, I don't know how we have to do, if you set up a workshop, I don't think we have to set up a, I don't think we do, but can we set up a time and we can go over that, so I haven't seen it?
Okay, what if, what if we wanted to go over it though, then it, does it?
If you're gonna discuss town business, that could lead to a decision when you can't get.
So it's no decision?
No decision.
So, so, but I think, I mean, I don't know about Kathy, she probably's been doing long enough to check and see, but I don't know, see, and I need to certify a fear. And probably you do too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Be, but I don't wanna do it during business hours because.
In how?
Yeah. So if you wanna pick a time.
I'm here tomorrow, probably all day. While I get around, and later, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking next week, so, well, I'll, I'll stop her Monday and we'll figure something out, see if we can schedule something, but.
If you wanna call it a workshop, you can, just so, so no complaints.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do. I just, we, we need to do the notification seven days for that, okay, so let's pick a date right now. How about, how about this? Tuesday, the eighteenth. That's what I mean, five fifteen. Like, do you have time to close up over there?
No.
What time is it?
Sorry, I'm still, I won't, I won't cash out.
Well, how long do you need? To cash out?
I think once.
Wow.
But there is a day.
Okay.
Well, I'm legally going here Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Five fifteen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good, so.
Tuesday, the eighteenth, at five fifteen.
You don't call it a workshop with no, wow.
We should record it, I don't see it. I just, I wanna go through this, cause I wanna know how this works.
Isn't the eighteenth a meeting now?
It is.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna meet for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, vote committee, two minutes. Planning board, two minutes.
Um, I have been getting through my emails, so I have printed them, where, where there's some? They were, they were approved at the meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
I was so busy today, and you mean, I don't like else.
God, for I would say.
They were emailed, myself.
Yeah, okay.
They're longer than you've been, well, it's always sudden and separate.
Ed Hook, planning committee, two minutes.
Did you get those minutes? I didn't get through my emails today, I have.
I don't wanna see them. Did you send them to everyone, but?
Oh, I don't send, oh, oh, oh.
Just the town office?
I don't know, it's my guess.
I don't think you did.
Cemetery committee, two minutes.
I think they've made, you need to go.
Solid waste committee, two minutes.
There was some of that.
Mm-hmm.
Recreation committee, two minutes.
I don't have any of those, they do, I don't know how to handle their events, because at the beginning of the year, they had a list of all the dates. The selectmen made a motion to approve all their events on these dates. Whenever they wanna add more, do you wanna vote on each one or just let them? They wanna do a week making J on eleven thirty.
Uh.
I didn't have time to get it on the agenda, she gave me.
No.
We could do that next meeting. You can approve it next week, only get that on the agenda.
Alright, yeah.
Could we, did you, we do have solid waste committee minutes, that's why we stupidly buy it, so, can we do with that or? In the packet?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, yeah, I approve my fees.
I mean, I'm, I'm doing, I'm right through everything, seeing, seeing accuracy, so, I just wanna let you know that. There's nothing before the eighteenth for the rep committee, alright?
Um, they, yeah, there's, they have something in this Saturday karaoke and the ne- the ninth movie night.
Alright, but I'll make a motion to let the rep committee use the hall on the ninth and what's this weekend's date?
Oh, no, those are already.
Oh, they're already in there, oh, I thought you said.
Just this week making it.
Oh, okay, so I made a substitution.
Or you wanna just add it, so they can?
No, we do that next weekend, that's not till the thirtieth. So.
Not really supposed to make motions under reports.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Make it add it to.
Right, yeah, yeah. Gotcha.
Here, your concession. You, you got anything, Peggy?
Okay, so first of all, the, um, at a prior meeting, you wanted to have the ordinance committee, uh, write a planned ordinance, and I just wanted to bring up the fact that several years ago, the town decided to get rid of individual ordinances for specific committees, and the comprehensive plan review committee was overlooked because it wasn't an active committee, so it wasn't put into the, uh, administrative ordinance part two, so I would s- suggest it might be more appropriate to have the, uh, uh, ordinance committee admit, uh, uh, many of the ordinance for the administrative ordinance part two, you mentioned the comprehensive plan committee, instead of the whole separate ordinance, just because you'd already tried to get rid of all the extra committee ordinance.
On, on, I haven't taken.
Officially asked, it was, it was mentioned, it mentioned.
Didn't we talk about it last week, a two, two weeks ago?
No, we got them, no, we didn't get to this, this particular viewpoint, I mean, it was, it was the minutes, I know, but.
I know it was discussed in some form or fashion, but.
I think it was.
I know, I'm saying, we have this. Or make a decision, do you really want a separate ordinance, or do you want, I'm just saying, to keep in, in the way things had been going? Or do you wanna start, or do you wanna have a separate ordinance again, I guess?
I don't think we need a separate order, we just need to address.
So then, so why don't you move to have it put into, to the administrative ordinance parts? Don't we already have, uh, the administrative ordinance part two in there to, uh, make some other changes?
Yeah, right, well, that's like.
Well, that's what, that's what I was looking at.
That's quite appropriate, yes.
Back in June, I directed in Kathy, before heading to the board, the ordinance committee to work on administrative ordinance part two, so.
We got that.
Yeah.
It's just that we have a charge list and the comprehensive plan isn't on, right? And we can get a new list.
It is, cause it's part of administrative one, part two.
Well, now, it's specified to be in the administrative ordinance, it said you do a comprehensive plan ordinance.
Well, now it's specified to be in the administrative ordinance, it said you do a comprehensive plan ordinance, I mean, that's, there are two.
Who specifies, I, I don't remember specify, I, that's why I'm like confused.
Okay, all right.
When, when, do you recall when that happened, cause I don't remember that being a direct result of our conversation two weeks ago.
Eighteen minutes, that's why, well.
Okay, I just, I believe that the objective was to make sure it got revised or updated in the administrative ordinance part two, that's how I.
Then that's, that's being communicated now, we need to have it communicated from up to either one, a motion and. And seconded or something like that, and yeah, not, not been such.
Can you take help, can you buddy?
Um, okay, so I, we started the scanning project and, uh. There's a couple of issues related to that, does the town have a naming, um. Nomenclature for digital documents at this point, addressing how to, uh. Date things and, uh, map a lot members, one specific way to name them so that it's consistent, so you can look things up the same way across the whole system? Do you have that planned, the naming, uh, nomenclature document that gives you guidelines for that?
No.
Okay.
Were you asking for something?
Yes, well, I mean, I looked up there, several, you know, several resources, and generally for dates, you should do the four digits of the year first. Two digits for the month, so if it's, uh, March, you put zero three, and then two digits for the date, so that way it's consistent when you're looking at.
You love that, right?
Right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
We're saying oh, three, oh, one, twenty twenty-five, is that?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I'm saying.
The twenty-five is first.
Oh, okay.
The two of twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
So that they always come, you know, if you order them that way, and. I assume that the Gmails or the emails are ordered that way in the email system, even though when you look them up, they don't say that, you, because this is the date and month that I.
We can, I do now, so.
And, um. Also, the other would be for how we're gonna do the map and, uh, what. Uh, I guess I would use the way it's done on O'Donnell's where it's, I think it's R dash, is it a dash? Cause I, the question is, should it be R dash zero one or R dash one, because we go up to fourteen, so it probably should be zero one.
It's R zero, okay, one, dash, zero, zero, three, and if there's a.
Then you should, the period with the, period with the, uh, what number?
I think you're on something, I don't believe we're all over there on that.
Pardon?
I would do however O'Donnell's.
Okay, that, okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify, it's, I'm starting a project and I realize how much. With fifty thousand pages that I wanna get pretty consistent, so we don't lose things, and the other issue, there's something called metadata. Which according to the state and various recommendations for scanning projects is that you need to have the metadata attached to the document, you're gonna eventually have it as a. Your only repository, at some point, you're not gonna have.
So you were telling about that today, I have no idea what metadata is.
Okay, so what that is, it tells you the, when the document was scanned. What machine it was scanned from, what machine it was scanned to, and, uh, you know, the date it was done on and given a, a, a unique identifier, which is the number.
Why does that matter?
Uh, because the le- the legal, the legal stuff, it's not us, because it's, it's not practical for us, but this is when you look up the main archives and what they want. And pirate archives.
I don't think that can make this any more difficult than.
No, no, I'm just gonna let you know that I'm trying to accommodate what I learned about metadata into the, into the whole process. And, um, Leanne says that, so, this came up in our, our planning board meeting too, is. We have received emails, they have the, um, minutes in the body of an email. And Leanne has been abstracting the email, the minutes themselves out of the email, so that's making a separate document. Do we just approve to be, to do that in the planning board, cause I brought it up, because I mean technically, it's not the same document if you extract it out. So, we just have to make sure that we do that on a regular basis, but the other thing is that, uh. Some of the emails that Leanne is keeping for the planning board need to be in the files for the applications. Particularly, it's a requirement in subdivision ordinance that any email, the purpose of that application be in the subdivision.
I know, I have much paper.
What? Well, I'm just.
So it's not you missing.
I can't close emails.
So.
So I'm just, it's a lot of complications when it comes to document management.
Yeah, I think that's just a matter of, is it? How often does that happen?
Having them saved in a file on, uh, Leanne's computer, for retrieval for freedom of information is fine, but you actually have to have a copy of the email. In the file for, particularly subdivisions in the ordinance, not, it's not in the ordinance for, uh, surely.
You're talking meeting minutes.
What?
You were talking meeting minutes.
No, I was talking meeting minutes, but also the emails in general, like when you had a, you know, email tree about a question.
Let's get back to the meeting minutes, so how often do you have to extract meeting minutes off an email versus?
Always.
So no one, no one sends it in a Word document, a PDF?
Not for.
No, because the person does the.
That's what I'm saying, how often for every, is it just planning board?
For every, no, some committees have a separate document I can save, but planning board is always in the body, and so I have to. Copy it, put it in Word, and put it a heading.
This might just be a, uh.
And, and we clarified that he doesn't know how to do.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this might be just a, something to just show him, it's Dawn, right?
Yeah.
So Dawn, I mean, he must have Microsoft Word. If he's got an email, he's typing on a computer, he's not doing it on his phone, I guarantee it, so, it should be pretty easy to show him how to do it.
The ideal, if there could be attachment, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that, well, I, that's why I brought it up, of whether we should be doing it that way, um. But then the other issue is that they have to be, at this point, until we decide on a permanent digital format, they have to be printed out for the planning board closet. At least in the subdivision, and ideally, because it's been officially done for all the applications, any emails that are printed through it. And the other issue is, um. The planning board used to have a key to the town hall, and that got changed when the locks were changed last year or so. And, uh, it appears now it is no longer a policy, the plan, and, uh, planning board personnel officially request from the entire select board to have access to any time to the town hall. This week it came up as an issue last week, because now, so now we would like to request the, um. Select board, if we could spend two to three hours one day a week in the closet back there, scanning the files, and we have the date says November. Tenth on the Monday, and then Wednesday, so the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, and December third, tenth, and seventeenth.
Is that for your, for scanning?
For scanning, we would, we would did it, we did it in the kitchen, that worked fine, but. We might conflict if somebody wanna use the hall, so we'll, we'll walk ourselves in the closet to do it.
I can agree to that.
Leanne?
Well, the problem with this, do you?
I was talking to her yesterday, because there was construction going on last week, and she had emailed, said her and Lenny were gonna come scan, and I said the hall's not available. Cause they were working here, and I didn't hear a word, and then they showed up and worked, so I, I was just talking to Peggy yesterday, she said Kathy approved right down to the house.
That just committed.
Oh, so, she, well, then Leanne was, was that all three of you on the select board have guys that can't make a decision?
Kay, we'll do it now. Big guys.
I want, here you're in opposition. Well, through.
No.
You have to add it, so you're gonna, what, that they decided they're gonna vote on?
Same.
Yeah.
What was your date again?
November ten.
Ten, and then all of my stays, the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, December third, tenth, and seventeenth.
That's just the way I have to come back every week and ask again.
Yeah.
But we can give you after we say how to leave it.
And as of today, the calendar is open for all of those days.
It's simple. All right. Wow.
Well, that's.
Well, I think it's, oh, just, yeah.
Saying I'm standing in open session?
And how, what is the process, why you need to access something in our closet and it's not a time in the town hall, is it?
So I have to get a hold of one of them.
I mean, comma.
We don't want to have a key.
Who?
Select board.
We have something, uh, that we should.
I know. I do, I just wanna make sure that you guys are aware, I'm aware that there's no sound, I'm not sure you're aware, I'm gonna repeat, you're upset.
I'm gonna upload it after the meeting.
And we'll, we'll attach to the, so people can watch it again, we can actually listen.
I hope so.
I'm praying.
So, you said before we started that Neil's gonna look at this?
Right, so we, I've been talking to him, and he's gonna come and check out the speakers that connect to the computer, and also see about. Possibly connecting the speakers, the microphones, to clarify, to the PA system that we have. To add a little more oomph to this, but.
I just find it funny that people think we're doing this on purpose.
Yeah.
It's not, I mean. Oh, there is, just read Facebook. I mean.
Now, one, so what's going on, and we can, on the speaking, thinking that they can, I mean, the people were lining right up, this is, I'll just put up. You know, we had to be, well, maybe get all here.
Right, well, well, not to mention that, you know, there's an option to watch it remotely, but it's, it's up, we don't need to show up on.
I, I, we started it four times, I don't know what else to. I mean, I just, no.
We know.
We know, because we get to test us through this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's seven different messages, then my phone people tell me, so.
One of us, it's, phones are off, so, thank you.
Then when Neil shows up at a meeting, then it all works.
Works.
Yeah, that's the reason.
Well, you, you should aim to be here every night.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yes, it's like, uh, it's like telling people, are your kids okay?
Yes, we said. Yeah, we didn't have any sound problems, I think.
Can you, making fun of them?
Right. That's so.
I was just double checking if what time it's.
I love, are we using the microphones at night though?
Yeah.
No.
We're just, can't say it.
All right.
Okay. Calendar reminders. Audience committee, eleven, six, six o'clock. Recreation committee, November eighth, that's seven to eleven. Recreation committee, eleven.
November eighth, you said.
So, November eighth, and November ninth, movie night, on the ninth.
What did you say to me, I was first time you brought movie night.
So, I'm, I should, movie night, do they gonna use the TV, or they gonna use the projector?
Projector, imagine.
They don't share a lot with me.
Probably the projector.
We don't need projectors, we do, we still have the, ready, I just wanna make sure that I don't think that's gonna be out.
No, the recreation committee is on the tenth, that is a Monday.
No, we're not talking about a meeting, we're talking about events.
Oh, events.
There's an agenda back there on the table.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, audience committee meeting, November twelfth, six o'clock.
Okay. Uh, I think that's gonna change, uh, because at the last meeting, we decided Monday was really a better night for us, and I think we picked. The last Monday of the month, or the fourth.
So, I'm confused why you're having a meeting on the sixth.
Because we didn't have, it didn't work well at our last meeting, and Jeremy still wasn't here, so we decided to book an extra meeting. So we're frustrated, we weren't moving forward faster.
Okay.
But, after, they're after.
So the twelfth might be changed?
Yeah, it definitely will be.
To what, any idea, you're gonna make that decision up at six?
I, I will let Leanne know after tomorrow's meeting, as the secretary, we just haven't had Jeremy in the meeting.
Right.
He's the chair, is right, right, last night.
Exactly.
Right, you should be.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
Maybe, we're aware that you did that, not a issue, except we didn't wanna move forward on much unless we were all there.
Okay, it's gonna be a rabies clinic, November fifteenth, from nine to eleven AM. Select men's meeting on the eighteenth, six thirty.
Actually, a workshop at five fifteen.
About five fifteen for the workshop? Okay, unfinished business, CMP pole relocation update, town office.
Play that, that maybe, yeah.
Yeah, that's, set. Finally have that. Easement taken care of, I've hand delivered it to send for main power. I called them back, six hours later, and they verified that it had been logged into the system, so that is a successful mission. Thank you to everyone. Yeah, yeah, but you should actually give themselves the pound of that, so. Um, at this point, I called CMP a couple of days ago, and they're in the process of cha- uh, coordinating dig save. So they can get everything changed over with that pole, so, just a weekly follow-up that I'm doing to make sure that we know what's happening there, so. Um, not much to report on, other than waiting on dig save.
Good.
Um, where's this landing at this?
I was just gonna say.
Is that?
Did I get approved last time?
No, we left it for the new, this meeting. Yeah, is that, do I talk about that now, cause I don't see that in new.
If you want to, no, that's part of it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just making sure, all right, so, at this time, because we are successful with the easements. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the proposal from Condor Electric and the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Um. To replace the rides around the building with a new mast, to meet CMP standard.
What font was that going out of here?
Uh, the town hall, fifty thousand dollar. I don't remember the exact.
A little bit of, yeah.
Town hall improvement account, yep.
Awesome.
Municipal building.
Right.
I'll start you there.
On favor?
So on that, I will reach out to him tomorrow. And let him know, we're waiting to hear from CMP.
Good.
You're gonna reach out to who, Condor?
Condor, unless, unless you want to, but I, I reached out to him, um. Obviously, that, I'd like, this is all part of it, so, at some point, we would wanna discuss, once that pole's been removed. Digging out the dirt and actually getting that little period paved.
Yeah.
So.
Does CMP remove the pole?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yes, so. How do we make that happen?
We'll, we'll make it happen when I talk to Ben about paving out here, we already have it.
Okay.
I went up to the town hall, make sure he still has the gold patch and pavement up there, I mean, the town salsa, before we get, before we get into land, and there is, so.
Okay.
I'll make sure.
I don't know, that's gonna hold up. I think he's got a peaking box, too.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll be all right.
For now, Peter, so I can plow over that, okay, all right, good.
Okay, town office, leak in the chimney.
Yeah, um, you guys had a good con, I could have, uh, Mr. Laberty look at it, cause he worked on the chimney in the past.
Mm-hmm.
He just showed it the next day, with his ladder and some sealant, and didn't charge anything, he sealed it up, he said. He recommends a new roof on that building, sometimes.
Were you in the town office?
Oh, the nails are popping out, that's why I've been finding the nails in the front. Sure, parking lot by our cars, I thought somebody was.
I don't recall, is it steel, or is it shingle?
Steel.
Steel.
It can, it, you know, somebody can't get up there with a screw gun, screw. I think they're.
The nails.
Well, yeah, you know, and nails do pop out, screws come out too, but if there's somebody went up there, we're gonna, um. Bad of screws, they were, the nails are popping out, like you put a screw down in there, it'll stay.
Is that the original, that the original roof on that building, how old?
More than likely, but, you know. Wow, Bill said something about ice.
Eighty-two.
Ice and water, yeah.
Falling and.
I think.
Grabbing them, this is, broke the seal around the chimney, you know, I know it damages a roof, so that's the one, which lights me.
Yeah.
Lovely.
Nonetheless, you know.
Yeah, not comprehensive planning committee proposed rules of procedure.
So, I just have one question on them, uh, I'll take to that, two of them. One goes back to a point I made back in jury. Why are we choosing new offices every year for an ad hoc committee?
Just because I thought that was the way we would think some town, you had no option.
I think, this is my thoughts, I think that an ad hoc committee being temporary, the officers should be determined that committee. Or just swapping offices every year, starting, like I said, many times, starting fresh.
And the last committee lasted five years.
What's that?
The last committee lasted five years, and I think, I don't know about the election part, but I know they didn't have the same officers the whole time, as people dropped out of committee.
So that's a difference that, I mean, if someone drops. So, that's a difference that, I mean, if someone drops out, I can't stand, but I don't, I think that should be changed, that's my thoughts. The other question I had is, um, and I think I found my answer to this after I wrote it. There's a line out that says an annual budget will be submitted to the town of Hartford Budget Committee in April. Do we even have a line out for the comprehensive planning committee on budgets? So, is that gonna be something we have to add? And I guess my question, what, what do you, what do you need for money for that committee?
We don't know, and many towns spend money doing it, but you're very fortunate to have people there volunteering, do a lot of things. And we haven't required any significant assistance from AdCOS, many towns have to have more scaffolding to get people's process. That possibly, so I'm gonna say, if we're just putting it that we would do that, if, you know.
So, so that leads me to my third question that you brought up today during the training or the planning day, is. What's the benefit of a comprehensive plan?
It's, we have to do it.
No, you don't.
Well, okay, so. The town repealed the two thousand eight comprehensive plan. Because having growth zones put the town at risk for requiring the four lo- four buildings per lot. And, uh. There's still some question within that, it's obviated completely, but probably, I guess it will as long as nobody brings that up. And it just occurred to me today that towns are not required to have comprehensive plans. And we could actually do one and just not have it state certified, which means. There would never be a state evaluation whether we need to have a growth zone, so that would be a way to. Go under the radar and not have a growth zone at all.
So. So, Ann, you might know the answer to this. When we had a state certified comprehensive plan, two thousand eight. Was there any grants that were eligible for because of that, and what were they?
Recently, I don't know. There were some recently.
That we couldn't get because we didn't have one?
No, we had.
Okay.
We had.
So, what were those? Hold on a second, hold on.
I just, I don't remember, I don't know if it was this. If it involved the road fund, there was something recently that required it.
Can you find that out? If I look through that list you sent me Peggy and. It said, yeah, send it to laws and that would be something.
Yes, it says, uh, if you have a comprehensive plan, you have access to eighty million state grants or funds. Like community development block, against shoreline access, downtown remodeling, water sewer infrastructure, all things we don't have. And, uh, let's see, uh, you have a law, a stronger legal standing for zoning subdivision rules, rate of growth. Growth tax or any things like that, with the legal challenges, but I mean, and, uh. And what most of this is not going to apply to us, cause our town is so small.
Well, that's my point. I s- I spent more time, or we spent more time talking about the comprehensive plan since June. Than anything else, and depending on what Lea finds, if she, if we're actually gonna lose out on grants, that's a whole different story. But.
If you're going state.
But I need, but I need facts, not hearsay.
Well, you may be saying it's taking time, but we haven't cost you any money yet, except for the printing those, those, uh, uh, storms yesterday.
You've crossed me money, Tylenol.
Well, but I, see, I kind of deal with minimal costs.
No, I'm, I was, I was joking. So, back to these, back to these, um. Are you looking for approval for these tonight? Can we make changes? Do you wanna talk?
Suggest that you're not gonna approve them because you wanna make changes.
I didn't say that, I said, that's my thought, I mean. I don't want to rest on those slow board decks, but why, why should we choose a new chair every, every year? Or a new secretary or?
Well, yeah, it's. Well, all the other committees do vote.
I get that, but this is a temporary committee.
Well, in theory, this isn't even gonna matter after June, right?
Why?
If, if, if the. Yeah, the.
Right, so, what do we need? Is this just to get us through to the administrative ordinance is amended?
Well, I guess, I guess so, I mean, we, I started this process not knowing there was going to try to be like a separate, uh. Ordinance for it, um.
So.
I don't know, we can now, it's like a big kettle, I don't even know what to do with it, because, uh.
I feel like we can get the ordinance passed if we're very clear with what the changes are.
And but then there's a separate issue, do we want to do a plan? And who's gonna make these decisions? Justice Letport? A plan that is certified by the state, or we want one? That is, guides our town, but it's not state certified, cause that has to do with all the fundings in the, in the future. And the previous residents of the town twice wanted to have a certified plan. But then, when they first started the comprehensive plan initiative, they were making it sound like it was more necessary. Or needed to be, and they, they've been moving towards it being more optional. I guess because the reality.
The fact that it's not required. I'm not aware of that.
So, they had a map, they had a map there, that there was four different subjects. No comprehensive plan, currently working on one. State approved, and there was a fourth line that I, for the wife and kid, I remember one was, and there was a lot of towns that had no comprehensive. Then, and I think maybe that fourth one was expired or.
And they have a chart that included.
I don't know that, but.
Did someone there directly say you don't have to have one?
I.
No, no, but I think if you read the legis- the legislation.
Yeah.
It says if the town decides to have one, and then as I've watched the progress. It seemed to be like it was, everybody wanted to do, this was the state, we had the whole state planning office, cause things were really exploding, that's why that all happened. Right, and then the growth didn't seem to go so fast. Praise is going up, but not the, the absolute numbers are very low, so. It was not such a, a crucial type thing to have, so it's more optional, but that growth. Zone area, I think, might get triggered if we send a plan through, guess it had higher.
That's how I took it, but the growth zone in here is gonna trigger.
Hey, it's a pain, if we can get away with not doing it, let's do it. Well, I think we just need a plan, because we need to have something.
I don't have it explained to you.
Well, I'll tell you, I got some comments from people who are not scared of it.
But I won't tell. Hold on, God, hold on, hey. I, I'm telling you, there's a lot of laws that. Will the town have to abide by with these goals, so. From what I gathered today. Now, have a point? I know, but if we have a comprehensive plan, we're gonna have to have goals on a comprehensive plan, that will have to follow a bunch of.
And the, the newer law this year is that in the growth zones. The, uh, the minimum lot size can't be high, higher than twenty thousand square feet, which is essentially half an acre. In the, in the growth zone.
I think, I think the states want you to do it.
Yes.
But, I don't know, for the town ourselves, it's gonna benefit us, unless, there's a lot of grant money that we're gonna miss out on.
That's, that's, that's the balancing act.
Lee.
Yeah, I. You know, I, I can't be sure about this, cause I don't remember exactly where I put it in my video, they're talking about, uh, you know, the. They were talking about, uh, denser growth zones. And what they, what I heard was where there is water and sewer available.
That's because there's two components. One is where there's a lot of sewer, and there's another description where there is not water and sewer.
Correct, correct.
So, you have to, you, you have to read the law, the, the, the provisions.
There was what, four, four means that.
Yeah, twenty thousand is a, twenty thousand square feet is the minimum for a septic. And that's what they've now set as the minimum lot size for growth zones, so basically don't have water.
So, you could actually have your house sit on top of your septic system?
No, it's the minimum lot size for a house with a septic. It doesn't say your house is on top of a septic, it means that's, that's how much size you need to be able to put on a lot, a septic.
That's not how much you need to actually.
No, no, that's the minimum lot size in a house that doesn't have a septic. And flash out, if you have.
There's, there's quite a few, I g- I got the flyers, I can show you.
Well, we have.
So, back to these minutes, or not minutes, the rules. Can we table these again for another meeting? So, I get some information from Lea, I mean, it's been what, since June, we haven't had them?
When is the next comprehensive?
Not before, not before our next slow board meeting.
Yes, the end of July.
Yeah, so.
So, you'll be reading for me.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I do think.
Well, at this point, having the rules in order, not really pinching upon our, our actions.
Well, where do we land if, if we find that we're not impacted by grant money or anything to that effect? Do we literally just not care about having a comprehensive plan?
Well, I think it's still worthwhile, because, uh, things that were suggested in ninety two were suggested again in two thousand eight, were still not buried through. And the big one that's gonna pinch our, our community as things move forward, is having a site planning view ordinance, and that's. It, I think it's beneficial to the community to look at everything, and I find it do it really cheaply by having volunteers and, you know.
What was that second thing you said?
What?
Forsecing review or something else, the.
There, there, there's, there were a lot of recommendations that were made in ninety two, the same in two thousand eight, and the town still hasn't.
Oh, yes, what do you mean the town didn't follow through? What, what should have they, should we have followed through?
E- each single, there's like twelve different topic areas, and in each topic area, there was a goal. And almost implementation methods, and all of those, uh. Documents that I created for each topic listing.
That's what, that's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure it's like.
Yeah, so if you, and the nineteen ninety two plan, the two thousand eight plan referred to the nineteen ninety two plan, and it took me two and a half years to even find a copy of the nineteen ninety two. So, I mean, just in, anyways, make. If we decide it's to our advantage to have state approval. We already had Greg Leclerc come, and he already offered to review our plan before it ever went to the state.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And that's just a service.
Yeah.
And you were there.
Yeah, oh yeah, all three hours of it.
Well, it's, it was great, I loved it.
I had a chance to wa- do it again today, but I chose not to.
Okay, new business. Bear Pond Improvement Association, we kinda scratched that, cause Chad is gonna have, uh. An individual from the Bear Pond. Someone that helps them out, come tonight, but. We figured it might came and take a long time, so he might come at our next meeting.
Good.
To talk about, it's gonna cost us anything.
To do what?
To them fix that culvert down at the Jones Culvert. Going to the Bear Pond.
So.
No, but no, what's happening is. At the culvert, about, probably ten feet beyond the culvert. I don't know how this happened, but there's a pile of rocks. So, the water is working its way around each cell. So, this Bear Pond Association wants to fix that. I don't know how they're gonna go about fixing it, but they wanna fix that, so the water, the chute's right straight. So, we was wondering, my question was, if it was gonna cost town anything, but this has.
Well, I don't know about half car, I don't, I don't know for sure, but my guess is, right across the street, they walk all side of the mountain.
But I was thinking, I think, the water ran through there, that's strong, the. I only rocks all over the heap like.
There's nothing sold out. Sold out, sadly, I have. Yes.
Very rude, yes. So, he's gonna come and speak maybe at our next meeting.
So, yeah, I, I was told about that, I was told by Rick and him that. Somebody, I don't know who, probably I'm a core engineer, you can tell. So. I don't.
It's been on topic for like twelve weeks now, though, we haven't heard anything.
I know, but now it's come back there, it might, it might cost town money, I mean.
That's what we wanna find out.
Yeah.
So, they will answer their question. He falls.
No.
Oh, this town row.
This is beyond.
Right.
Yes, they like to do any bad. So, yeah.
Okay, number two, follow use request, community dinner.
Yep, they chose November. Twenty third, wait, which one do we?
Is that the one that police sent you?
Yes, November seventeenth, sorry.
Is that the? Corey, Corey?
Yep, yep.
Monday the seventeenth.
Well, it was seven, what is taking place?
It's a community. Community, yeah, dinner.
No, it's not for Corey Brian, it's.
What?
Is this?
Guys, hey, enough, enough, we're, we'll tell you what it is when we figure it out.
The twenty third, when Corey Brian, that's already been approved, seventeenth, it's two.
It's a community dinner for.
For the food, to food distribution, I guess.
Yes. I'll make a motion to let them use the town hall and waive the fee. For the seventeenth, uh, November. Yeah, I don't know, did they say a time?
I might have a message, no, I was speaking six thirty, they said.
Even insurance?
And insurance, yes.
You're waving.
We are waving insurance.
You're waving insurance.
On favor?
Who said you did?
I did.
My favorite toss.
How, I have a question about the insurance, though. Don't we usually have some coverage of insurance on this, by somebody who uses it?
Yes, always, unless it's a true town advantage, then our insurance would cover it.
All the, you will consider this a true town event?
It's really no different than the event that Cassidy's.
Right.
And she's.
We paid, we paid for the insurance, all rental.
That's what I mean.
Oh, I did think you guys had, I definitely waited for that too.
No, we paid it, we didn't bring it to you at all, okay?
Right.
Okay, well, that's different. I thought, I was trying to keep the standard the same, I thought.
I do one summer stuff.
Oh, okay.
I, I didn't realize that.
Yep, the insurance guy said it's not a true town event if something happens.
Okay, then I, I'll, like I said, I was trying to keep the standard the same for everyone, so, if that's the case, then I'll, I'll. Take the medical insurance, they need to provide it. So, I make a motion, let them use the hall, the wave fee, but they need to provide insurance.
I'll do insurance.
Start the second day again, we're good, right?
We're good, we all favor this.
Okay, crib side collection.
I can't even read.
All summer and into this fall, Archie's had missed picking up trash on a weekly basis here at Pine Shores. Our Harper newsletter has listed time, the schedule is something by Archie's. We need to, we need a dependable pickup routine, recycle at this point. I'm gonna call it that, but I did hear a message from. Pine Shores President Day, that Archie's did not pick up the dumpsters that they're scheduled to pick up every Monday. And they did not pick up the recycling that they're supposed to do every other Tuesday. I read that to. They didn't.
No, it's, there, it's huge.
I don't care. They should show up in a community, they eat every single week.
Right.
Because they don't know how to do things any other way, and do it consistently, so just show up, even if they're long married.
So, I'm guessing that you still have her back tomorrow, attorney?
No, I was gonna wait until after tonight, cause I wanna ask him another question, so I was gonna ask both at the same.
Can you try to light a fire in him? Um, it was, I don't know.
He responded to me that. I'm, I'm trying to remember, he, he essentially tried. We haven't really had any issues in the town of Hartford. I just, I made sure he knew that that wasn't, actually, I.
I can't believe he didn't say that, I mean. I can't believe he didn't say that, I mean this. Every week he says that, so.
So me too.
That.
He, well, he cleaned, I'm up. The, the individual I was communicating with. Said, said that. Is, is it possible that maybe the dumpsters were empty? And I said, absolutely not, because everybody in Pine Shores community watches that place like a hawk, because they don't trust that you're gonna show up, do what you're supposed to do. And. He said, we haven't really had many issues in Hartford, but we'll make sure we get it picked up.
Their years have shared. They haven't been, they haven't been here.
So this, to the solid waste, to the solid waste committee, I took advantage of the. One of the presenters that I should have went and saw, but I didn't realize they were talking about solid waste and trash in it. But I spoke with her during lunch and it led to a conversation with a guy beside her, who owns a business that.
Helps establish.
Yeah, helps establish transfer stations. So I gave him my business card, he's gonna deal with his, um, person, his office. There is a fee. I, I told him to send me some information, so. We can, um, hopefully pursue this deeper.
We will leave office, because chair is the solid waste committee, I will say that, before you see you guys on the.
Sixteenth, that's right.
At the next meeting.
So, the name of the company. T R C. T R C Companies, and they look like something national, but this guy was. He looked uncomfortable, but, uh. Hopefully I see something from here.
Guys, we are, we are sharing the information that we were looking at.
So, back to his complaint.
It's, I, it's been addressed.
Uh, so. I'm at the point, I hope these are as are too, that this lawyer gives you, gives us the information that I think he's gonna give us. We need a backup.
What are you looking for from the attorney?
I want, I want, I wanna know our legal, um.
Option, how to draw from our contracts?
I don't have a draw, he's better to go to the.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's essentially the objective. Got you.
But we can't just draw without a backup, right?
Right.
That's, uh.
So, that's part of the.
But, like I said in the previous meeting. One of the previous twenty five times he hasn't met his obligation, I spoke with Almighty Waste. Who just so happens to still have a trash truck, even though they don't do curbside pickup anymore, he's willing to give us a price to do it, if that has to be. So.
They said, no way.
I called the cell phone directly.
Nice.
Soon as I mentioned the word Archie's, his whole tune changed and he said. But, um, so I can reach out to him again. The information I would need, though, is he needs to know how many households that he would need to pick out so we can get us a price.
What the heck, we had that on our, on our questionnaire, how many was it?
That's something you can email me?
How many households? The number seven twenty shows up for me, but I don't remember if that's normal.
No, more than you can do somewhere.
Or maybe, maybe if we still have the, was it last year we sent the contractor or the previous board sent the contract? I'll contact the, the bid out. Maybe I can just send them that, so here was the original bid was sent out at, could you price it off of this?
There's a thought.
Can we look at that before we send it to him and see if it jives with, I mean, I'm. Just take, taking a thought for a minute, like, I'm curious what the existing contract even says, does it say that there's a certain amount of dumpsters on Pine Shores? Does it say there's a dumpster on last?
Then, that's, that's, that was all up to Archie's, they determined.
Oh, they determine what, but needs.
But that's, but we'll be on that one, because they went around and put their own new dumpsters that he claimed were a problem. He knows the hell.
No, I get that, I'm just curious, like. How great is a contract in the first place, considering what an absolute horror still this is back?
It was.
So, I would, I would agree with you. If it hasn't been a year.
No, 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 I think you're missing my point, I'm saying, no, if we're gonna hand a contract to somebody else, we wouldn't. Wouldn't it be better if we made sure that it actually was apples to apples, and we'll be actually gonna need?
Well, if we would have to put it out to bid again, we change contract, because we have to hire someone to finish the job. To use this.
Yeah, I see.
Right, it, it, I believe you have to, have to, uh, if you have to hire someone to complete the contracts. Then you have to go up and bid to.
Right, that's what she just said.
So you're saying that we would be. See, I guess my only question was. What determined that Pine Shores, as an example. Got curbside versus having a three dumpsters or whatever over there?
There was some history in that, because I don't, I think they used to pay for their own collection and then, I'd have to look at it minutes to see. How it changed and what the conditions were.
Think they did.
The original conditions of Pine Shore subdivision was that they need to be responsible for taking care of their trash.
But, but, I think it's because it's private group. That's against why they put the dumpsters.
Well, it had to do with the conditions of the subdivision itself.
Well, there's still.
We've never had, uh, uh, sixty lot subdivision in town.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but why am I even, maybe I'm misunderstanding what people are telling me, but why am I even having conversations about the fact that Archie's didn't pick up?
Cause it changed, the slip, or the town or the slip, meaning. The agreement to their request that the town paid for their trash.
Oh, okay, so that.
I don't know what the skills were.
Right.
Well, I don't know.
What?
Well, fill us in.
Okay, I'll agree. Well. Uh, the people at Pine Shores. They were owed to me on the slipboard and they moved forward with the idea of going in transportation. Switching over to curbside pickup and they wanted Pine Shores to have curbside pickup and they took it to town maybe one year and it failed. We just found even a year and failed and they took it to town again and finally, town beat them enough that they said, oh, okay. But it was a matter of, you know, it was in the original. Agreement with the town for, you know, the, the rules of this subdivision was that they didn't take their, their own trash.
So I think you said, but once you close, the south, once you close the transportation, they had to bring their trash someone.
Well, there you go, one of those, but they didn't, they could have, they could have had a front contract and have their stuff picked up. And, and curbside or dumpster and you would just go on this, uh, just like, uh. Well, just a game pipe business.
Yeah, but they're not a product, it's their taxpaying citizens, but they had like rights and curbs.
That's how you know it's like, and it's, I said, yeah, they wanted to, you know, close transportation and they did and, uh. Uh, small people concerned citizens said, well, it's for the solid waste committee and we started discussing. Continue to have a transportation, even though our transportation was very poor damage.
So essentially, at some point, it was brought to the board and the board approved them being in it, so that's.
No, 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 no.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, okay, right, yeah, alright.
Taking.
So if you're gonna change the contract or, you know, a different provider, is that also gonna include the faulty waste? I mean, you know, the annual thing?
Uh.
I mean, you have to consider that part too, I guess.
Right. I guess that would be a yes, because it would have to, because it wouldn't be dealing with Archie's.
Well, or we can make it a simple, put everything back out the bid again, this is just to get it by, I don't know if this guy's gonna do it long term, I think he can help as well. But. Let's cross that bridge, we need to cross that bridge.
Right, when, so, right now, we're talking about re, having a deeper discussion of the solid waste committee meeting.
So, for, for this, we can check up on, see if he.
You will pull on the.
The empty.
Um, the road procedure, what did you do, did you take over?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, for them, yes, yeah.
It's sign purchase surveillance cameras.
Evidently, from what I saw, why does it, why are this something, when it's selling, cameras?
Be nice to add a, huh? I think it would be.
So what corner you were, what, around the side of the building?
Do I catch him on the ads?
I do. If we don't even legally, I don't think we need them.
If we, uh, maybe you're right, maybe we should have just bought the signs or just bought the cameras, but not both. You put the signs up to say there's cameras.
The grant were out of the selling. So I was, yeah. There's no action needed on that, right?
Okay.
Good.
Cool.
Um, but I do have an order from the board, we're, yeah. For comments. Uh, work ahead signs, I didn't bring the book, there's a bunch of signs they wanna order, which we talked about. On the other meetings, but he keeps adding to it, uh. Check a road sign, it's a bunch of signs.
Is it?
And poles and.
Poles, oh, sign poles?
Yeah, those, poles.
We have that in the budget.
It would have to come out of that female. Reversing.
Nine.
Uh. Was he looking behind house?
Yeah, he's waiting for me to order, I was actually, I wanted to wait to see if he wanted that screen.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to protest the signs that they were making her, if trusted.
A second.
Oh, paper?
Alright, hold on, I need you to laugh.
Like, why have my tax bill received?
Check back.
Okay. Committee reports, spouses, committee approved minutes for agenda.
Some insight? Was this? No, I'm asking. Who put this on? It's one of you.
It was requested from the last meeting from the audience.
From the audience?
Because I had suggested, because the rec committing and other people were. Getting them mixed up or thought they had two present reports, but it's a committee, I thought it should be the minutes.
Yeah, they knew the rec committee that was one, wasn't it? So.
Oh, they, they're the ones, one of the ones that's confused.
I think, I think we wanted to add this back on the agenda to have a discussion once you were here. Uh. I, I, I vaguely remember some thoughts that I must have had about a week or two ago where. In support of, I believe what Leanne was saying was, right now, people come and they wanna report on it, but they may not actually be. Reporting on what the group approves as a, as a whole.
Yeah, cause like the, the elected and appointed town officials are one, because the committee is, it was like five people who all vote.
I totally get both sides, so I get that. What Leanne said, we don't need the secretary coming and speaking for the whole committee, giving a report. But on the other hand, I understand their point where we're gonna be a month behind.
And. Sometimes things might spark good conversation and I, I have appreciation for that comment that I heard somebody say, so.
Lenny?
Well, also, it's community friendly to have reports. In terms of their understanding what's going on, people are not gonna go to every committee meeting, nor are they going to repress the minutes. You know, it just makes it cumbersome.
So here's my.
Are we afraid that people don't misrepresent the committee, is that a complaint?
No, but. Well.
I feel like that.
Possibly.
I feel like that.
Not on purpose.
Is that what the objective is to?
Oh, I get.
I was, I was understanding that that might be what we're trying to actually avoid.
Wow.
Misrepresenting what the majority of the group decided or wanted to put out there.
We're fixing something, we're doing it for our, nobody's in play.
And then the minutes will, will reside for prosperity of what actually happened. But it might give you a heads up of where things are heading or when. Uh, issues will play. You really know what somebody say, oh, I was sleeping the other night, only three people showed up, so we had a forum, but we didn't make any decisions, I mean. How, how was that? Where are you talking about? I mean, you know, we, we usually report, it was issues that were discussed.
I guess my question. What is wrong with the way we're getting reports now from the road commissioner, the ACO? The Archie Ten Director, why can't?
Well, if you print to, they approve two minutes.
Well, no, you're talking about, you're talking about a report versus approved minutes.
Exactly, they, they wanna give reports.
Well, that, well, that, where do you want to write it? Why do you allow just like, you speak about the committees in addition to having.
What I, what I want, Lenny, is for ten reports to be in writing, yeah?
Yeah.
So we don't have to sit here for forty five minutes to an hour and listen to everyone read off their reports.
Totally.
I think this way these reports sound, I think people just comment like, well, you know.
Well, they are, the road commissioner is, the ACO is, the CEO is, the Archie Ten Director is.
Time would be taken for those reports.
I have one.
But I, I guess.
It's up to you guys.
I believe this, I just wanna go back to where I think the, the point was, is that. Leanne, I think, was hoping by doing this, people would actually give her legitimate minutes.
Right, because I have no rec committee minutes, I have notes.
Right, so you got, I'm just gonna use Becky for an example, she comes in and she gives a great report. But you have no legitimate paper trail that follows what that committee has been doing.
Problem was, the committee has to be drifted to these final minutes.
Well, they had a problem because they, they didn't have enough members, they had two people doing everything.
Yeah, well, that's what she said when I talked to her, she said, well, we only had two people for the first few months, I said, well, that's not a meeting then.
Right.
But she, you still recall.
They were playing.
I wanna, I'll make. I would like to make a personal statement that I like getting their verbal.
You know?
Explanations, but I also sympathize with what Leanne needs to have good account.
Me, and that's because it says approval next, doesn't mean no one can say a word.
Right.
Right, but. It's up to you guys, it's not my thing.
We do both.
I think, I think we should hold our committees accountable to. Do the proper reporting as expected, and if, if they're coming to the meeting and ha, and giving us a verbal.
Then they just.
But I, I guess we would be relying on Leanne to chime in at some point and say, just, just a reminder, we haven't gotten any reports from you guys. Over, right, like, how, how do we know sitting here that they haven't turned in?
Well, because I share them with you at your meetings.
Okay, well, right, so we're gonna still approve ones.
We're no doubt, we're in. Missed it five minutes, it's always like, oh, what's that?
No, we just said, it was a mistake.
I miss, I misspoke.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we all settled that, we have to, there's nothing to vote on, we're just making a statement, right?
It's almost such a, so if somebody here representing a committee.
Taking by.
They will say something important to say. They will say something important to say, just raise your hand and ask to be recognized.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
I don't like what's going on in the open session.
So we're not being racist here.
No, and I think we just need to respect the, the importance of turning in meeting minutes, so.
Yeah.
And you, yeah.
But you're not gonna get them more because you don't let people speak.
Right.
No.
We are, are we good?
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, next one, number six, Zoom requests for board meetings.
I gotta think about this since we started this meeting tonight, how is Zoom gonna be any different with the microphones than YouTube?
We never had any problems, we, the only problem we used to have was with the internet, but that's been corrected.
I, I got contacted by a, an, uh, individual and. I asked for this to at least be added so we could weigh the pros and cons, but not necessarily make a change. I'd just like to have a conversation with the three of us and the four of us about both pros and cons.
We used to have Zoom, it was like hundred forty-nine dollars a year, cause we go over the limit, the free. But we didn't have a YouTube statement, it should broadcast them.
Yeah.
People mentioned so many years.
Right, we knew it as it was happening.
Well, that's.
Or request of recording, which was difficult for me, cause we didn't have YouTube.
And you're gonna have to keep monitoring people who wanna join.
Or enjoy, the other case, want to speak up.
Right, and. That's what I'm afraid of, it's gonna turn into a. Full-time job, I'll take minutes and monitoring Zoom for Leanne, which. That's a recipe for disaster.
This is almost like two people's job.
Yes.
Right.
And I am totally confident, just because it worked before, it's gonna work now, I mean, because you still. You still got a microphone on that computer that isn't working for some reason, what tells you that it's gonna work for Zoom?
Is this just reference to skateboard meetings or like?
Yeah, it's just a skateboard.
Okay, it's not, it's not that.
Yeah, nothing else, just these particular meetings. Um.
Not Zoom, once people can see each other.
Oh, yeah.
You couldn't comment.
Right.
It, that's definitely.
But that was only supposed to last until after COVID.
That's why I wanted to ask, like, did that begin in COVID?
Oh, yes.
So, prior to COVID, did the town of Hartford?
No.
Broadcast anything?
No.
So we're, again, we're continuing a, a byproduct of.
Well, no, there's not one more change that I'd see when we win the meeting.
There's no doubt, but that's my original question, what makes any of us think that it's gonna be any better on Zoom than it is on YouTube? It's still a microphone issue.
People think it's better, they can potentially pay it, not all.
Which maybe.
Cause that's any people called me, so I stepped outside.
Again, again, no one's answering. No one's answering my question. What makes you think Zoom microphone is gonna be better than YouTube microphone?
You don't ask that of the person who trusted it.
With seven people in the room, we're to discuss, only six of us are residents, discussing what we're gonna do for the whole town. I hope you, I don't think we have that particular question on the questionnaire.
Right.
And in, you know, do you make a change in policy because one person makes a comment?
No, it's, it's.
Sometimes.
But, in my opinion, it was, it was something that I had explored or heard the pros and cons of.
And I think many public access TVs will, will broadcast, you know, skateboard meetings and, and it's not expected, but things are gonna be interactive when you see the meetings.
Right.
So I think it's an extraordinary situation to have, to have a, a Zoom meeting with individuals participating.
Right.
I, I, myself, I just think that's extraordinary through a meeting of this nature.
Right.
This is, this is not a YouTube issue, this is something. That is going on that laptop.
Right, right.
It's no one's fault. No, it's no one's fault, I didn't say that, I'm just saying, it works sometimes, it doesn't work next time.
Right.
There's no rhyme or reason.
So there's no, I don't think there's any motion to make here because we don't.
You're all here to say it, everybody's making money on the internet by doing this stuff.
Right. I, I don't think we've identified any pros that make us wanna move in a different direction than the YouTube's internal files, so that's the bottom line.
Yeah. Good.
Right.
Thank you. Waste committee request.
Waste committee request.
Sorry.
You done?
If like speaking this, no, I'm, I'm the chair. I am the chair of the waste committee, um, its place committee request is to, uh, pick the town mall calendar and find a weekend. Sometime between, uh. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, when we can have a hall for the weekend and have, uh, another one of our buy now for the days. Because this year we recognize that, uh, that they're not gonna, nobody's putting together a giant toy getaway. And because we know this is for daddy stuff, officials, those are making a big stop. And it seemed like, seemed to us that this is a good time of year to have a buy now for the days.
Do you have, you get to count it, is the sixth and seventh open?
Is there a specific time that you think is more effective?
Oh, well, I had questions.
That's why I'm thinking the sixth and seventh, beginning of December, after Thanksgiving.
There you go, send them out for Thanksgiving, uh, you know, have a black fur, I'm gonna pick up all kinds of stuff. Maybe it's just work for us, but it does.
I, I'll make him, um.
Okay, so let's take it up. Six and seven, when you need the, uh, I'm not, I don't know, three days, I'm not doing, I'm not doing for your hairs. So I can be here, I can be here to take in stuff when you, uh, open the hall and buy next week.
So you said, you said you need it for the weekend, now you need it for more than a weekend?
Well, no, it's usually been, uh, Friday night, Saturday night, what, four times a night?
So it's Friday night as well too?
Friday night, Friday night, we drop stuff off, we, you know, kind of arrange that on tables, then what's that next?
So. Now that stuff going on the next weekend, so I'll make a motion to let the solid waste committee use the hall, the. December fifth, sixth and seventh. No, fifth, sixth and seventh.
Fifth, sixth and seventh.
For the buy now sale.
I second that.
No fear.
These are the twelve, thirteen and fourteen are not available.
No, that's not, that's why I chose the sixth and seventh, and after that, it's foreclosed for Christmas.
Okay, number eight, foreclosed property attorney advice.
So on November twenty-sixth will be ninety days since I sent the certified letters to the two prior owners of the foreclosed properties. I know the Turp Street property wants us to hire a realtor to sell the property and any. Excess funds will go back to him.
Is that the place that's all boarded up?
No.
It's a little camp, that's a lot.
Oh, yeah.
But the one on Camp Road is this, I've heard his deceased, all his letters come back. By Facebook people, the same name, they're here, sure enough, they're not related.
Wow.
I looked at Kirby, I think I needed, with the new laws, contact the attorney to make sure we do it right. I don't know if we can put it out to bid, have to hire a realtor, where the funds go.
I think you still have to put it out to a realtor, I don't think it changes just cause the guy is problematic, but I could be wrong, but.
I thought it was if the property prior owner requested it be sold by a realtor.
That's all laws.
Yeah, they have to make a question. So, I'd like to talk to you.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to allow Leanne to contact town attorney regarding the foreclosed property.
Sign it.
That won't do it. To get you right to the point and give you an answer, and you'll say, contact the town attorney.
So you wanna put Ann Partridge in there?
Okay, task commitment, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So, when Mike was here, he said there's only one page that really had to pay attention to, can someone write me a map?
Yeah, I think about four pages to be signed.
Well, he said there's four pages that we decide, but there's only one page you really should pay attention to, man, I go, he didn't wanna tell me what that was.
I was too busy trying to get sound work and I didn't.
Now, this is before the meeting started, you might not.
I do have the tax worksheet with families, the range of what the memory could have been and what, what you did. I don't know if I copy, but it's second to the last one there, the bottom, but the first four it is.
Me Peggy and, uh, Leslie. I think Peggy did.
I wonder if Leslie does.
No, we picked Leslie, you're not doing it. We have.
Yes, um, yeah, so. The rep, one representative's free and if anybody else wanted to go, like, God, I'm still tired from this.
I bet you are, I was thinking about that, it's a long day.
I think you guys agree, but if anybody else wanted to go, they have to pay the membership price. Probably in the minutes.
Keep talking about it. Make sure you don't screw that up.
One shot.
It's most important to not be outside while you're.
Yeah, it's. Four signatures, sorry.
You're gonna have controversial enough, calling it as the prone to Arthur.
That's a dog.
Question by mine, do we have the results of the, uh, withdrawal?
We're gonna talk about that next. But yes, everyone voted. Everyone voted yes, all, all three counties voted yes.
This rule, what are you gonna do?
Where?
On the, uh, the, the triangle, it's called Patrick, comma, May.
It's, it's on the town, looks like. Right on, soon as you open it up.
It, it was last night, but I.
Last night, right, about ten o'clock, maybe more, you put it on there?
Nine thirty?
Yeah.
Put it on Facebook and, cause I'm safe, also, here are the results today, we would.
You must have that first one pinned, it looks like it's a bunch of old.
Yes.
But it's pinned because it's the hours.
The rule?
Yeah, when you go to that Town of Hartford Facebook page, when I, when I was scrolling through it, it shows an, an old post of like twenty twenty-one. But it shows like the town office alley, so I'm assuming that's why it's pinned. I was curious about that.
Because it has the rules that are required to be on the social media sites and not to be used by members of the public for reporting issues.
Did it have the hours too? I mean, yeah, okay, that's, that's what I was, got, so yeah, that's intentionally pinned there.
Yeah, but it's right there underneath.
Exactly, okay, yep, right.
We got nothing, there's, there's only four?
Four. Yeah, exactly, again, that's pretty amazing, turn around considering there's so much.
Law.
So.
Alright.
You wanna do the, I'm actually ten.
Yes, where?
No.
Yep.
Training?
Yes.
We added one, talk about I'm actually ten.
So. I think, um. Play B and L in school. So Leanne, you had questions, right, so I'll tell what you need, what you need to do. So, according to step five, which is the step I believe we're on. Because step four is petition, petition of withdrawal must be approved by secret ballot, which was done yesterday. Okay, so step five says if residents of the municipality favorably. Vote on a petition for withdrawal, the town clerk shall immediately give written notice by registered mail to the secretary of the regional school unit. And to the commissioner of education, which will include the petition article adopted by voters, including the affirmative and negative votes cast. And an explanation by municipal officers stating to the best of their knowledge, the reasons. Reason or reasons why the municipality seeks to withdraw from the regional school unit, so that's the part that we should clarify.
Right.
Before.
I think one thing in there is, the ne- next step is to hiring the lawyer.
Well, that's a couple steps down.
Couple steps down, this has to be done first, step five and then step six is. The commissioner shall direct municipal offices of petitioning municipal, municipality to establish a withdrawal committee. Which will include a member from municipal offices, which should be one of us. A member from the general public, a member from the group filing petition, and one member from the regional school board. Regional school unit board.
Each town has to do that.
So, I reached out to Diane and Summer to see if they sent anything yet, and she's waiting for a skateboard to word. How it should be written, do you have it already done?
Hawkfield sent me this, can't.
Perfect.
But I didn't know if you wanted to have our lawyer help us or just go with what they have or.
I see.
I mean, we'd have to change it, of course.
Yeah, I see we go with what they have and then when, when this gets, we get to the part of a lawyer.
I didn't change anything, I just printed my notes.
I didn't waste any time, did I?
I, Pete probably had it, I already had it, no, Cam.
I know, yeah.
So, yeah.
Is there a time limit?
Yeah.
It says.
I saw a time limit somewhere.
Just on this, it just says immediately, I don't see.
You, you say the word immediately?
Yes, right.
Yeah, I could have sworn. I saw it.
The town clerk shall immediately give written notices by registered mail.
Alright, so if you give me your, what's the reason because of the petition?
That's what this says. Local control. Materiority facilities.
That's their Lord's reasons.
Right, sounds good to me.
Yep.
So just to.
Change.
There's some questions on, that I saw today. That vote wasn't to withdraw, it was to continue the process.
Right.
So, let's get back to you. And at any time, initiate, and at any time, we can back up. From what I understand.
By, who can back out?
The town.
Any town.
Any of the towns.
By vote, county vote, or?
That's a good question.
Great question.
I don't know the answer to that, right? I'm hoping the lawyer, I'm hoping the lawyer can lighten us on. Now, the other question I have is.
When I read it, it said ideally by the end they'll be from the election.
But that's AI.
Right, nah, that's.
This is, this is right from the state, so. My question for everyone up here is, do you guys think it'd be a good idea, set up a meeting with the other two sled boards, Buckfield and Summer? Because. I don't want them, anyone else but us choosing, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't want someone else choosing. Our lawyer for us, cause it's gonna be a lawyer that's chosen, that's been through this process before.
They're, they've mentioned numerous times that they were interested in first discussing this with our attorney that we already used.
Right.
Well, when I asked him that first question, he said it was urgent, he. Well, when I asked him that first question, he said it was urgent. He. Obviously, it's not a good work, because he had the answer to say.
And that's what we want. We want someone that's been through this process before. We don't wanna get someone learning on our dollar.
Right.
No, and I believe that's what Neil had mentioned it on the.
Yeah, so, do you think it'd be a good idea?
That they had one.
To meet with the other two slate boards, maybe ideally at the same time, but not necessarily have to be at the same time?
Well, I guess we can, but the, the way, the steps that I read, said we have to nominate these committees. Nominate somebody from the public, nominate one of us, nominate, what the hell is the third one?
Member from the group filing petition, which would be guessing, uh, plan, uh, the ad hoc committee, whatever that was, the withdrawal committee.
That makes sense.
Yep.
She's telling me the sound, so, which would probably be Neil.
Yes.
But doesn't sound like.
That's what it says.
One board member, oh, no, one member from the RSU ten school board.
Right.
So that means we would essentially by default have to have, ask Chad to do it.
Yeah.
So it'll be one of us, Chad, like, you, you said, you say you asked somebody yet or no?
I did, I, I, so, knowing, looking at this before the meeting started. I, I reached out to, um, a town citizen, this has, you have to have one member from the general public. And he, he was more than willing to volunteer to be that person, if, if we wanted to, okay.
So my understanding was, once we have that group formulated, then that group starts. The meetings with the other three selectors, but it doesn't, I don't dispute that we can schedule a meeting.
I just, I'd like to know if they're far.
You can do it, schedule something with them.
So who wants to lead that? And we'll reach out to the, the GM and, and I'll reach out to, um, Diane, see if we can set something up.
I didn't have a question that may be kinda dumb, but if we're having a meeting.
I think we'll see, we have to figure it out.
Yeah, hello, hello.
So what do you mean?
I think.
If we are having a, a meeting. And it could be at the inbox.
There'd be no decisions made, so it wouldn't be.
Right.
We're not making decisions, because.
Right.
Well, are we? We're making a specific decision to choose which.
No, we wouldn't.
Lawyer, or, or we're just giving our opinion on.
Yes.
An, an opinion is different than a decision, right?
So I'll reach out to Cam and, and Diane, see if that's something they can talk to their board and see if they're interested in.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Now. Do you need action on, direction on this letter, or are you just gonna do it?
Um, if you're okay with what that one says.
I am. Make sure you change everything from Buckfield to Hartford.
I'll email it to you guys before I send it.
That'll be good.
Yep.
Do you have that four-page document of steps to be followed in the withdrawal process?
I'm okay, I read it.
Okay, there's something to that.
appointments or reservations?
Yep. So I have Jaleen.
Who?
Jaleen's going to what?
No, that's, that's training, appointments or reservations.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, that's right, okay.
I was gonna say. So I don't have anything formal, but I do, did get a text message from Dave Terrier while we're sitting here. That says he is stepping down from the planning board. So, I'll text him back tomorrow and have the committee do something formally.
Mm-hmm, alright, I'll email it to you.
Or email it.
Definitely accomplish.
So, I did speak earlier this week, and he realized that between the road committee, between the planning board, ACV club, buses on the ACV club. Somewhere up near Mexico, one where he's just spread way too thin.
Well, actually, last night at the planning board, we discussed this, is he missing any?
Yeah, but he only missed two, he, the October one. And Peggy's gonna correct me on that, but his October one, he did send the email to Dan, so he couldn't leave there.
Dan didn't even finish that class. One thing it doesn't, I don't remember what he said. David was a very valuable.
I mean, just, just to be proactive, do you know him off the top of your head, anyone, feel about any?
No, we don't.
No, we can wait. It hasn't really, we.
Probably is. It's not too many requests. So that guy would afford the planning board.
Yes. That's important.
Just in the record, if you, if you did some good work.
I know, and it's kind of, it, it, I tried to talk him out of it, because he kind of told me this is gonna happen, but we just paid for him to go to training two weeks ago. And we are.
But they never done a training.
Mike. Jaleen?
Is she doing the, uh, is she actually going in person or is she doing the Zoom?
I think one day is in person and one day is Zoom, that's why I'm not home.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was, um.
They should.
Oh, there's, there's day one, day two. I didn't realize, I thought it was going together.
As soon as we get like other sounds, I'm just closing off, I just.
You're only.
Yeah, that's right. Fifty bucks? I'll make a motion to allow Jaleen to attend the Battle Records workshop on September thirty-fourth.
Second.
You skipped over some ones.
Did we?
It's that.
Yeah, you were supposed to add to the, uh, agenda and a new business, where you're gonna approve our dates to come in here and do the scanning. Watch how they said. Oh, did you? November ten.
I thought we did that.
No.
Oh, yeah, it was open session.
I don't think we have, so we're gonna add it, but I did say you could go on an open session.
Right.
Uh.
Add it to the agenda?
Then no.
I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda. Choose the days the planning board can use the hall.
Second half.
So what, what were the days again?
Uh, this coming Monday and then the following several weeks on Wednesday, which we feed the, the, the tenth is Monday, then the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth, the December third, tenth, and seventeenth. We chose Wednesdays because of, uh, Leanne would be there on Wednesday, and we could do it, we could do just if our table in the kitchen, or we could move into that closet if you don't want us to use the whole hall. Well, they're spraying the building next week. I don't know what day, and it's hazardous, so. They're doing what to it?
Spray foam.
Basement with insulation, but I don't know what day.
We get tent, they told me.
If they come to the tent, just let us.
So on the open hall up on the tenth.
You're supposed to open another tent for them.
Oh, so they are coming, Chad.
But, uh, all I know is they said a week at the tent, so. I will open hall on the tenth, just be sure.
So you mean we can't walk in the building while they're doing that? So what percent? They said it's.
It's toxic.
It's their.
Spray foam insulation.
Oh, the, or insulation?
Spray foam, so it's a two-part. Square.
It's best, yeah, but. If they don't come on the day, can you let us know?
Yep.
I mean, couldn't they tell us the day? We try, I think. This is important work.
Yeah, so that brings up a good point, that's changed something, but that week at the tenth is a lot going on, they probably not gonna be here on Wednesday. There's an ordinance committee the twelfth, there's a waste meeting the thirteenth. Well.
Well, that's it tonight, you're talking.
I don't, well, that's where I'm going. How long can they not be in the building?
I don't know.
That's why I want.
Well, they were gonna do it last Thursday, but there was a breakfast on Saturday, and so they only got it off.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
So it's gonna take two, three days for them.
Can we see?
Well, of course, I see the food.
Can we see if they can do it on Friday?
Well, they're supposed to have it done by the third, first, because they're already.
They're supposed to have it done by the freaking August thirty, almost.
Um, Friday, we have a rabies clinic.
What about the nineteenth? It doesn't look like there's anything going on.
Uh, we just hold stretch.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So you're, you wanna change it from the tenth because they wanna move?
No, because we're trying to make sure that they're not going to, there's a lot going on next week, but the following week on the nineteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-first, twenty-second.
You guys doing a date?
Well, we asked for the ninth.
No, they said it would be fine. It was just because it was gonna be food here and.
Oh.
Our scanning.
Right, come the twentieth?
Maybe the tenth.
The month?
Yeah, so, one of those days by my small here, tenth?
Ten, ten, and then the following week on the Wednesday, and then all the Wednesdays until the week before Christmas.
So tenth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth.
Third, tenth, and seventeenth.
Alright.
In the morning.
In, yes. So I'll make a motion to the left planning board, use the town hall on the tenth, uh, uh, November tenth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth, December third, tenth, and seventeenth.
Well, not meetings, but.
Right, to stand, to stand.
Together to speak.
Yep.
The second emotion.
Okay.
So. It's gonna be here before ten. They got to contact one of us to open it, of course.
Wait, we, we have a reason to be here in the late. Yeah, I meant to say.
Okay, alright.
Get to sleep then.
No, okay, the comedy, that was not convenient, but the end we try.
Uh, back to training. I would, I had something I wanted to add there since Peggy. Uh, paid for the training today out of her pocket, I think we should reimburse her for that. Because I think that she gathered some good valuable information and she's good to bounce that stuff off, so I appreciate you doing that, I think we should.
What, what was, what did you have to pay? How much did you have to pay for that?
Thirty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to reimburse Peggy the thirty-five dollars, we have to talk planning today.
I second that.
Okay.
Um, you have a receipt, they give you a receipt. For my auditor.
Mostly an email receipt, I would hope. Or something.
I'll need to wait a second.
That's all.
Okay, you done yet?
Yeah. Those four messages?
Battle Records webinar.
That's what we did there.
Okay, review correspondence. Through results.
And please. To make. The top one has. If we're presenting, we should.
Do policy reviews.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, Laurie.
All right, go. And your team, best show of the best.
Why is mine even?
That's, yeah, it is the same document, that's why, that's why I was asking, Mr. Harvey, this chair selection.
Oh, how like that, misconstrued.
So you know, lighting out there. What's the relevance of this, in this full employee's office? That's, what is it, that, that, if he has. In health insurance, or for you, through the, okay, yeah. That, that you're the only one, right?
You always jumps, but it's.
Yeah, well, that's no surprise, right?
Do you plan for increases? You're changing all the plans.
We, do we play it on that much when increase?
Oh, we, we, I don't know if you try it, okay. I think it was.
She has said between six and eight, that we planned, right?
Yeah, night. Okay. This kind of thing would come up in that meeting that we scheduled two weeks from today, right, or not, is that? We're diving into budget meeting?
No. No, that's my company, Paul.
No, but we, we, we would probably see a line item for this, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, are we doing that here, or are we doing that at the town hall?
Right here.
The budget thing?
Yeah. I should use your computer.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because a lot of times you like having. Well, what would you prefer? That's what I'm asking.
Well, she's gonna be closing up.
Yeah, I don't have any specific budget questions, I just have.
I'll print, I'll print the expense, the. So, wish the audit was done and all the admissions paid, but it's okay.
So basically, let me give you back now. I asked her Monday if she could give me a printout of the last three to five years budgeted, actually.
Right.
So I could start looking at it, and wrap my head around, you know, what are we budgeting for, what are we actually using?
Right.
To see if there's any.
Clough, maybe?
Yes, and I got looking at it, and I didn't have, I don't understand it.
I didn't even look. What I do for the budget meetings, I have an Excel paper, and it's timed to me, but I like to plug each numbers, then I'm familiar with it, rather than just printing them, report off like that.
Well, that's what I figured, that's what I was thinking.
I have several years on that.
That's what I started doing with this. But. I need, I need, I understand.
I'll bring my Excel too, it just doesn't have the complete end of year for that.
And if you have to, you can send me the Excel file, and we can use my laptop, we need to, to, so you can have access to it. But you wanna print the whole thing off?
We'll just print it.
Okay.
That'd be good, though. I'm looking forward to that.
But I think it's getting confusing, because like this current year. They. Plan to use so much, you know, reduce the budget and use so much from reserves, so it's. It's, no, we should have keep money coming from everywhere, going here. Did we?
Alright, so agenda, I listen, that's meeting.
Number one we ought to have on there is Mr. Harold. We haven't heard anything from him for a couple of hours.
Who?
The junk. Junkyard.
Harold?
What's this first?
Harold.
Right, Rodman.
Rodman.
Where, where does he live? Are we gonna vote?
He lives in Turner.
Okay, oh.
He gets to be a town farmer.
Right, okay, that's, but it's a town farm, okay, okay, yeah.
Okay.
But I voted up to, uh, go to his junkyard today.
On, on, across, having a heat on for celebrity meetings. Okay, so we had an election yesterday, sorry, we paused the meeting for a minute, so we had an election yesterday, I hadn't had a chance to clean up, and. We'll shut it off if you like.
Hey, so, I voted up to where his junkyard is today. For the neighbors that live across. From there, he's back to Harlow stuff. Back down in the area where we asked him a year or two ago, call off, put it back behind his gate in the junkyard. So when I checked, he, on his junkyards, he's supposed to have the fuel and everything out of these tanks and oil, whatever. So, I checked one of the. The pieces of junk that he had. With fuel tanks, and one fuel tank still had fuel in it. And it's an apparatus that we can't run, I mean, there's no motor or nothing.
Like a frame with a gas.
Yeah, so, he needs to pull that stuff off. He just keeps adding.
So, it's not really much, also, it's more an issue for Jaleen. So, it's not really, also, it's more an issue for Jared.
And I bet he's even adding. Junk on compound road, on hell, yeah. Waiting just about. Yeah, I don't know about that.
So isn't this, this would be a code enforcement issue though? I, I, I'm good, we'll put it on the agenda. To direct. Jared, so just, yeah, just put it on the agenda next meeting. Um, what else do you have written down?
Rules of procedure.
No.
No.
Ah, yes, sorry. Yeah. Night.
Bye.
Herb site collection. Or chili.
Yeah.
And for Joe. Sounds good. Twenty-six, but I'll let you know when it could be seen.
Uh. Don't forget to put on the rest committees. Day, whatever the day was, the thirtieth, was it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Rec, committee brief making eleven, I mean. See, it's kind of confusing, because they're a town committee, and they can choose their own. Meeting dates and stuff, but this is. Event, public event, so I don't know, you want to be helping. Like I said, you approve, the board screwed up the other.
Might as well put something on there for the RSU ten withdrawal, I'm sure there'll be something that you're talking about.
Yeah, sure. So you're reaching out, you said?
Yeah. You're gonna reach out to Rick?
Yep.
Okay. I, I don't have any.
I gotta follow up with Neil. If we. Wanna look at the laptop, are you, did you say you're around tomorrow, Leanne?
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Don't have sleep days.
Yeah.
Right here.
Me too. At four thirty.
Alright. Did I have anything for agenda?
Goodbye.
Both moved there.
Cold passion, Lee.
What am I doing, this, this, this is going to my guy here, the key, I hear. What about this one, and the boss?